I'd like to call the meeting into order and welcome everybody to the November 30th, 2021 meeting at 6:00 PM. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting, Bennett's, from the October 26th, 2021 regular meeting. Entertain a motion.
Motion to accept is submitted.
We have a motion to accept by Mayor Cole. We have a second?
Second.
A second by Alderman Coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. First item. Site plan, match at Laverne, fast truck service, new building of 5,750 square feet on 4.98 acres. Requested by Green Lid Design, property located at 393 Mason Road, tax map 17, parcel 12.01, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Manas Shangoli. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for site plan approval for the fast truck service facility. It's been submitted by Green, LID Design. And this property is about five acres in size. It's currently vacant. And you see here on the screen, the property is outlined in blue here. And there's a closer look. So just a vacant lot. The applicant is proposing a new building of 5,750 square feet and associated parking and driveways. This is the zoning map on the screen. You can see the dark blue is I-2 Heavy Industrial. So no issue there with the zoning. Moving on to the site plan. This is the latest that was submitted. So zooming in there, you can see driveway configuration and the building. They are showing four parking spaces, including the ADA spaces. Sidewalk has now been on there for several weeks, so they're building the sidewalk as And some site photos. And you can see there's some trees on the site. It's not real heavily wooded. Going back to that latest site plan. So this is the, you see the truck movements for the radius of the truck turns. And all the technical items have been addressed several weeks back. And then I know there was some concern about the driveway. I know they've been working with Alderman Coats on that driveway. But all the technical comments have been met by staff, so I'll be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Is there a representative here this evening? If you would state your name and address for the record.
Drew Ferguson, Green Lid Design, 114 West Main Street, Galveston, Tennessee, 37066.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for working with us on everything. I guess this would be a question for both yourself and staff. In the bottom left-hand corner of the property, it seems like there's a cutout for the sidewalk. If you wouldn't mind explaining that?
So if you can see right here, the property line actually, you know, kind of jolts around right there at the road. And then there's a storm structure that's right there, right off the road, that would be interfering, would be interfering with it trying to connect the sidewalks together.
Mr. Logan, do you have any comment on that? I just hate for the sidewalk to come to a dead end at the corner from both directions.
Yes. It would be best for all if they would connect that.
I do know that, you know, from our survey, there is a storm structure or an outlet right there where that, you know, running underneath that road, I believe that's Sanders Road underneath there. And it comes out right where, so where it comes out at would be where essentially the sidewalk would be intersecting. And there's no, unless we want to remove that and move the pipe down.
Yes, sir. Questions or comments from the board on this? I'm sure somebody has.
Would there not be just a way to go around it?
Do you mind if I look at one of the sheets?
Please. Thank you, Mayor.
So this is, I believe, gravel through here. And it's, I guess there is a way we can connect it. I do know that this runs, you know, to here. So trying to keep it off of the pavement and connect it, it would get, you know, real slimmed in between here. It'd only be a couple of feet wide right there by that storm structure.
Mr. Brown, is there a way to work with that that we could, that staff can look at with the applicant to find a way to connect those two sidewalks?
Yeah, I think definitely talk about the one at Sanders, right there at that intersection right, not the one at the top of the sheet.
Not the one at the top of the sheet?
No, there's nothing at the top of the sheet, because that's a, I believe, a private, like gravel road.
It's an access road up to, yeah.
This is a, that, uh, it's on Sanders.
Yeah, there would be a way, some way to get it to work. I mean, he may have to extend that pipe and extend that drainage structure further and then come around. I think when he all had mentioned that, so there'd be a way to connect it up.
Okay. I can state for, at least for me, in my opinion, I prefer the two sidewalks to be connected versus having the non-connectivity there.
That also, we want to make sure connectivity is for the sake of the gap there. If we can work it out, let's figure it out, whether it can make it work.
Is there a way we can get it approved pending? Do we, you know?
Normally, we do not do contingencies, so more than likely, what we'll request is a motion for deferral to come back to workshop in order for you to get your paperwork in order.
All right.
And then just another comment, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Please, sir.
Also, if you would, when you make the changes, C-5, I appreciate you widening the road.
Yep.
And the entrance. On C-5, it looks great.
Okay.
On your landscape, L-10.
It's the landscape architect, he's out of town and he, you know, if I can get him in town and able to, you know, get the renovations, he didn't have the updated layout, and that's partially on me.
So we want to make sure that they're all matching up.
Yeah, we could, I'll, I'll get with.
We got a few details to work through. We'll get through them.
So is the landscape plan not the current landscape?
The, no, the landscape plan is the current landscape, but the layout, our layout of the site is not up to date with what's shown on our plans.
Okay. Can you walk us through what changes were made with the landscape plan?
Uh, yeah, we, so we had the buffer on the Sanders Road, which is where it connects to this residential area. We essentially made a buffer continue around and run all the way along Mason Road to cover most of, you know, our parking area. But our parking area is also going to sit roughly 15 to 20 feet above the top, the highest point of Mason Road, you know, that stretches our property. So we're showing a buffer, but it's also going to be elevated to where it's not going to be visible from the, from the road.
Any other questions or comments? And my only comment is, is when you address the sidewalks, make sure they're handicap cut.
Okay.
We'll get through that together with staff, so with, any questions for us, sir?
No, sir.
Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to defer.
With a motion for defer from Mayor Cole. Wait a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We'll see you at workshop, sir. Thank you. Next item. Site plan, Dick Buchanan Trailer Storage. Trailer storage on 15.47 acres requested by SEC. Property located on Dick Buchanan Street, tax map 14, parcel 50, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by CSJ and Associates LLC. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for site plan approval at Dick Buchanan Street. This is the trailer storage facility. And you can see on the screen there, this parcel is north of the Kite Home Improvement Center and the Carter Lumber Facility. This is 15.47 acres. And see on the screen, a closer view of this site, and it is vacant this time. SEC is requesting this approval, and they've been working on the project now for a couple of months at least. There's no structures proposed, as you know, on this site. It is for trailer storage and trailer parking. The zoning map there on the screen, you can see the dark blue, navy blue color is I-2 Heavy Industrial. And surrounded by a lot of industrial land as well. There's a picture of the property. And another site there of the property, another picture of the site, excuse me. And this is the latest plan that was submitted. And so zooming in there, you can see this is Dick Buchanan Street to the left of the image that runs north and south. And then this is the main entrance here that they've changed over the last couple of months per the planning commissioner's comment. They have a total of 477 spaces on site, so you can see there 447 53-foot spaces and 30 spaces are 35 feet in length, so. And then an even closer view shows how they've configured this entrance. The planning commission has requested that there be a restroom facility on the site. This latest revision does show a restroom facility, so I've zoomed in there to show it better. And then this would be the eastern side of the property that shows the remainder of They are showing a sidewalk, as you know, that runs along Dick Buchanan Street, so they will be installing the sidewalk. They did add the landscaping on the landscape plan, and that was a comment from the last workshop, so that's in your packet as well. And that completes all of the staff's comments, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments from the board on this item?
As I say, I appreciate the developer working with us and answering all our comments and adjusting everything that we asked for, so with that, I'll make a motion to accept or submit it.
We have a motion to accept is submitted by Alderman Coats. Wait a second.
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. First item under new business, concept plan, Woody Thomas Village Live Work Development, seven units on 0.59 acres requested by Womble and Associates. Property located at Woody Thomas Drive and Old Nashville Highway, tax map 17E, Group A, parcel 1, C-2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
This is a request for a concept plan at the corner of Woody Thomas Drive and Old Nashville Highway. And you can see there on the screen, this is the site that we're looking at. It's on the southwest side of Old Nashville. The applicant has proposed a live-work development with, the bottom story would be commercial uses or office uses, and the upper stories would be for residential purposes. Currently, the property is on C-2, and the applicant has indicated they will request a rezoning to C-3 in the near future. I believe they've already submitted that for December. Closer look at the property. It's a flat site with only maybe three mature trees on the site. And here's the zoning map. You can see this red color indicates C-2 zoning. So it does have C-2 on the other corner as well, and then R-3 is this green color across the street. So there is a mixture zoning in the area. This is a site photo. So Old Nashville Highway is here in the distance. And then this is the other corner. You probably know this yellow house, and it is on C-2 as well. Another look at the site with Old Nashville Highway in the distance. And this is directly across the street, so this white home is zoned R-3, which is high-density So I'll run through quickly the plans that were submitted from, for the workshop, so that's Plan 1, 2, 3, and 4. And after the planning commission workshop, the applicant resubmitted, and these are the slides that show their proposal. So zooming in there, you can see, you notice in the legend, this is our three-story townhomes, which were discussed at the workshop, so they have labeled those appropriately. And this layout shows the parking area that's proposed. And there'd be three units that sit closer to Old Nashville, and then three on the opposite side of the parking area that, two are attached, and then one is detached. This lighter gray is the dumpster enclosure and dumpster pad, and the blue area is for And let's see, I think I've covered everything in the report, including the surrounding zoning. So there were no technical comments, since this is in the early stages. That's pretty typical. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Please, Mr. Campbell.
So it shows the sidewalk coming around to the dumpster, but on the side, four, five, and six, there's no sidewalk connecting to the dumpster, so those folks would have to walk through the drive of the parking lot. So can you add the sidewalk around that side?
Mr. Logan?
Yeah, so this will come back with a detailed plan at a later date, so we can cover the technical items at that time. When we're drilling down to the sidewalks, we can cover that later, because they'll have to come before you again.
Very. Thank you, Mr. Logan. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other questions or comments?
And then I just wanted, just input from the workshop. I mean, I appreciate the developer working with us again. Increase in the car park and the amount of spaces was, I think, key to this. And I think moving the dumpster around to the location that it's showing now from the workshop is adding a better location to give us a straight shot for the dumpster and also adding three or four parking spaces.
Absolutely. Mayor?
This is just me speaking out of opinion. I just, I don't feel like it necessarily fits the surrounding area that's, that's there.
Susan?
I'm not comfortable with the three-story, real narrow myself. I don't think it fits well either.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to accept the concept plan on Woody Thomas. That's submitted.
We have a motion to accept is submitted.
Quick clarification, which one?
So I'm going with the one submitted today. It's the one dated, let's see, November the 23rd.
Sorry.
No, no, sure, sure.
So we have a motion to accept a submitted concept plan, the last concept plan submitted, correct?
Correct.
We have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
We have a tie on this one. And for the, slightly torn on this. With me being a direct neighbor of this property, I would feel most comfortable abstaining.
So the motion fails.
So the motion fails. Just cannot vote on this item. Motion fails.
I'll make a motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
So the motion fails, so we're in pass here. Without legal counsel, this evening.
We just go on to the next item or defer it?
Let me make it easy. Let's make a motion to defer, and let's get the full board on and get an opinion from there.
Absolutely correct, so that we have a full quorum to do it correctly. We have a motion to defer by Alderman Coats, second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We will discuss this again at workshop. Onto our next item. Preliminary plat, Holmes Place, 32 lots on 10 acres requested by Womble and Associates. Property located at 147 Jones Mill Road, tax map 14, parcel 24, R-2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by Abnan Shreeman. Mr. Logan.
This is the preliminary plat for Holmes Place, where they're proposing 32 lots on 10 acres. And property is on the north side of Jones Mill Road. See here in the image, it's a very long parcel, north to south, rectangular shape. There's a closer look at the property. There is a existing home that's on the property, existing brick house, and the north, two-thirds at least of the parcel is heavily wooded. There's another picture, there's the outline of the parcel, and the orange color is all R-1. So this, this parcel needs to be updated to show the R-2 zoning. It was rezoned earlier this year. Here's a photo of the property, and the existing driveway is in that photo. And then, hard to see with all the trees, but in the distance is the brick house. And then, as you're facing the house, the right side of the property is a horse pasture currently, and so that's what the property looks like in its current state. Taking into account the comments from last month, the applicant resubmitted, and they have created a dog park on, I believe that was Lot 11, two weeks ago. So the, the lot number shifted a bit because of that lot, but they did create a dog park and made a couple of other changes there to accommodate some of the sinkholes that are existing on the property. And the comments from staff, they didn't have a lot when it was submitted, so all of those have been taken care of. So that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions or comments on this item on the board?
No, I think that we discussed at the workshop at length, and adding the detention area there to take all the water and keep it on the property, obviously is the right thing to do and is required. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
We have a motion to approve is submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Site plan, BJ's Wholesale, new buildings, including wholesale store, gas station, tire center, and liquor store totaling 107,687 square feet on 20.51 acres. Requested by Kim Lee Horn, property located on Industrial Boulevard, tax map 29, parcel 14.01, C-2 Highway Service Zoning District, property owned by BJ Wholesale. Mr. Logan?
This property, excuse me, this item has deferred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Item number six. Site plan, Quanta Computer, building addition of 9,500 square feet on 30.91 acres, requested by Nickel Architects, property located at 400 New Sanford Road, tax map 29, parcel 5.14, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Pro Lodges. Mr. Logan?
This is a request for site plan approval for a building addition to an existing building. This building is located on New Sanford Road. It's 400 New Sanford Road, and you can see here in the property, excuse me, in the photo, you see New Sanford Road that runs north to south here. This property's on the left as you head north on New Sanford. And this is the Quanta Computer facility. So they're requesting approval of a 9,500-square-foot addition to their existing building. And there's a closer view of the building. By the way, this is, was built as a pretty typical warehouse and distribution center, so it is 518,000 square feet, almost 519,000. So fairly small addition of 9,500 when you compare to the total size of the building. This site, let's see the zoning map. This is the I-2 district, so the dark navy blue is all I-2 Heavy Industrial. And the, this site is not an overlay district. They are showing 303 total parking spaces that are there today. So this is the, some site photos, this shows parts of the building. And a pretty typical warehouse and distribution facility. This is the site plan, and the gray area, zoom in there for a closer look. So this is the 9,500-square-foot addition, so that's what the plan encompasses. There was a note, because you'll notice on the plans, going into the workshop, they mentioned the cooling towers, so the height of the building and the towers was not indicated. They've since indicated that 25 feet is the height, so you might notice that on the plans. I think that covers everything. So be happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. Do we have any questions from the board on this item? I believe they did a good job covering everything for us, so we'll entertain a motion.
Or make a motion to accept as submitted.
A motion to accept is submitted by Mayor Cole. We have a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Coats. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Item number seven. Site plan, 457 Sanford. Trailer storage on 5.2 acres requested by Fulmer Lucas, property located at 457 Sanford Road, tax map 29, parcel 13, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Saiz. Mr. Logan?
This is a request for site plan approval at 457 Sanford Road. This is a 5.2-acre site. And it's just north of the proposed BJ site. And zooming in, you can see this site sits at the top of the rock cut or the cliff, if you will. So it's an elevated site compared to the BJ site. Moving into the site photos, you can see, so this is taken from the drive there at Industrial Boulevard. So we're talking these mature trees that are existing. It's this site that's on top of the rock cut. And this is another view looking northwest on Industrial Boulevard. So it's this driveway before the traffic light. If you know where the new traffic light is, it's the last drive to the right, or the last cut to the right roadway cut. The zoning map. The zoning map shows that it is I-2, and so this is the first piece of land that's zoned I-2 as you move north out of the BJ site, which is zoned C-2. So this is the latest PDF that was emailed from the applicant, and that shows the entire site. And you notice the long approach from Industrial Boulevard. The whole site's 5.2 acres, and there's a closer view of the tie-in to the parking lot from the drive. The intended use here is trailer storage, if you didn't know that already. So they have not proposed any structures on the site, just the parking at this time. And the planning commission has had some comments about their proposal over the last month, so they've addressed some of those comments, but they've not addressed all of those requests of the planning commission. They are not in an overlay as Industrial Boulevard, and the pieces that touch Industrial are not in the architectural overlay. And at this time, that completes the report, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. Questions or comments from the board on this item?
I'll make a comment. I spoke with both the applicant and engineer today at length in my office, and I did tell them I would be motioning to defer this, this gives them time. They want to come back at workshop and discuss some of the items. They very much thought that just submitting this would be a straight shot, not, and they were pretty shocked with the requests, and want to come back at a workshop and discuss that at length.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor.
If no one has any other comments, I will make that motion.
If there's no further comments, we'll entertain a motion to defer.
Motion so moved.
A second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. We will see them at workshop. Item number eight. Final plat, replat of Lot 1, Interchange Cities, Section 4, and final plat of lots 1 and 2, Legend Properties. Two lots on 7.17 acres, requested by Young, Hobbs, and Associates. Property located on Hail Quaker Boulevard, tax map 17, parcel 41, and 28.01, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Legend Properties LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is a request for final plat approval for a site that's located on Hail Quaker Boulevard. This site does touch the Davidson County line at Hurricane Creek. So this is I-24, just to the south of the property. And zooming in, you can see there is an existing building on the site, and they are proposing to subdivide this existing property into two new lots. The total size is 7.17 acres. And the zoning map, you can see this is a solid area of I-2, so not really any other zoning in that area except I-2. And here's a photo of the property. See, the existing building is to the left in this image, and this is a flat area that appears to have been mowed and maintained for some time, but is still vacant. This is the plat that was submitted at workshop. There were no technical comments, so this is the same plat. They did not resubmit 10 sets, but there is a set in front of the chairman, and the mayor has the golden egg in his packet. All I had left was two, and they didn't resubmit, so it's also there on the screen if you have any questions. But there weren't any comments, so they would have resubmitted the same exact plan. That is everything in the report, so I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on this item?
Is the applicant here?
Sir?
Is the applicant here?
I do not believe the applicant is here this evening for this. I'm assuming with no technical items, they just assumed we wouldn't need them, hence the non-recent mention. Questions or comments, or we'll entertain a motion.
Well, personally, I'd like to see the applicant here, personally. I mean, that's common courtesy, I think, so...
I'd like to understand the, as far as the lack of comments, which is why I was asking.
Yes, sir.
With that, I'll make a motion to defer.
We have a motion to defer, so we can speak with the applicant.
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Thank you. Item number nine. Set bond amount for the retreat at Finch Branch, Phase 1, tax map 17L, Group A, parcel 8.05, requested by Womble and Associates, R-2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. Huddleston Steel, on behalf of their client, is requesting that the planning commission set the bond amount for the public improvements at the retreat at Finch Branch, Phase 1, which consisted 28 lots on 12.09 acres. And you can see, there is a overview of the property, and it sits very close to the Mason Road, Panatoni Development, and IC. And this is the property, again, can see it's all zoned R-2, and a large area of R-2, and it is next to the IC facility and the Panatoni buildings, which are zoned I-2, of course. And here's some photos of the property and the infrastructure that they've been completing. So you can see the roads where the binder is in, and curb and gutter. And this photo is the location of the mail kiosk when it's installed. So they've set this area aside as well. Per the subdivision regulations, the developer has submitted three bids, an average plus the required 20% contingency, and the stamped estimate has also been provided by the engineer. Bids are from Blue Water, Blue Sky, and Price Construction. Engineer's estimate comes to $83,328 in total.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and all are signed and sealed. Mr. Logan.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Questions or comments from the board?
Just quick clarification for the agenda. I know the agenda says this is requested by Womble and Associates, but it's Huddleston Steel.
Minor typo there. Any other questions or comments on this item?
Appreciate the applicant getting signatures on all of them. We'd like to be consistent in this board, and I appreciate that. So with that, I'll make a motion to accept the 83,328.
And I will second that.
We have a motion to accept the stated amount, seconded by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Onto our next item. Item number 10. Amendment to the subdivision regulations, amend Article 2, Section 2-106.2 and Article 4, Section 4-108.5, to refer these fees to the fee schedule that is being established by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Set a public hearing for January 25th, 2022 for this amendment. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So in your packets is a copy of the changes that are being requested in Article 2, and it's Section 2-106.2 of the subdivision regulations, and also Article 4. It's 4-108.5, and this will tie the fee in lieu of sidewalk construction to the fee schedule that will be adopted annually by the city of Laverne.
Mr. Chairman, what we need denied is actually just a motion just to set the public hearing date. That way, once we have the public hearing at the meeting following the public hearing, then you can approve the revision, approve or deny, you know, just have a motion on the sub reg change.
So the motion needs to be stated, motion to set?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
So with that...
Let me just make a motion to set the public hearing for, let's see, January 25th?
So we have a motion to set the public hearing on, I lost my place.
10.
January 25th, 2022. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Second by Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to our next item. Item number 11. Recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman, amendment to the zoning ordinance, amend Articles 1, 4, 5, and 8 to refer fees in the zoning ordinance to the fee schedule that is being established by the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Mr. Logan.
So this item, similar to Item 10, there's a copy in your packet of all the changes that are being proposed, and this will help the city as they move forward in adopting the fee schedule each year, and this will amend 1, 4, 5, and 8 articles of the current zoning ordinance.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on this item from the board? None, we will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted by Alderman Coats.
This is just a recommendation. Either we're recommending a favorable or an unfavorable recommendation.
So I'll make a, send a favorable recommendation to Mayor Alderman.
Thank you, sir. We have a recommendation for a favorable recommendation from Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do we have a second? I will second that motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And our final item, bonds and letters of credit. So...
Mr. Chairman, I'm still working on getting some of that updated, the normal list that you see, so I'll have that ready for the next meeting. Currently, though, the only bond or letter of credit that needs to be extended is for Chelsea Estates, Phase 2, and I'll reach out to the developer on that and make sure that is extended. So like I said, I'll have the updated sheet for the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments from the board? With that, thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.